Good evening and welcome to the July 17, 2019 meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. So, moving on quickly to the agenda, citizen speak. Do we have anyone for citizen speak?
Yes.
And Mr. Funling, if you want to just sign in, put your name and address and go ahead. We don't have currently, we have a draft policy for, you can go ahead and sit down, Mr. Funling. We have a draft policy for public participation for citizen speak. So, we don't have anything, we've had a first reading of it, so we're going to have that in place pretty soon. We'd like to try to adhere to it. The policy provides for 15 minutes in total, three minutes a speaker. It's not hard and fast, so if you could keep it to, you know, three to five minutes, that'd be great.
Yes, I will try to be brief and I'll speak faster than I normally speak.
Well, don't feel compelled to do that.
I'll leave out the dramatic pauses.
All right.
If I can hand about six copies of something to...
Oh, please, yeah, please do.
Thank you. So, my name is Jay Funling. I live at 39 Seius Lane, and I'm here tonight to respond to an issue that was discussed at the last meeting. This discussion was about the Pilot Committee and about a bill proposed by Walter Timmeltie. This bill proposes charging tuition for public schools for certain children who live in the town. If this law were to pass, it would create the only group of children in the entire Commonwealth who have no access to free public education. Now, the law is written in such a way that tries to lump them in with tuition charged out-of-town children, but the situation is much different. Out-of-town children have the option of attending school in the town where they live. This would create a class of children who have no option, no opportunity to attend free public school. The law proposes charging tuition to teachers who live on Milton Academy property. So, why are these families singled out for unequal treatment? Maybe the thought is that each family should pay for their own education through property taxes. The average cost per child in Milton Public Schools is, as far as I can tell, $51 million divided by 4,200 students. That's about $12,000 per student. I have two children in the schools. I cost the schools $24,000 per year. My property taxes are $9,000 per year. I don't come close to covering what my family costs. My taxes are about average around town. The average single-family home in Milton does not pay enough in property taxes to cover even one child. Now, as we know, the schools are about half of the town's budget, so to cover the cost of one child, a house would have to pay $24,000 in taxes. Only 99 houses in town pay $24,000 in taxes or more, so those are the only houses that can say they cover the cost of one child in the schools. What if you have two children in the schools? How many single-family houses in town pay $48,000 and can say they cover the cost of two children? Only four. So, pretty much, nobody in town is covering the full freight for their own children in the public schools, and that's how it's supposed to work. We pay for the schools as a community, we use the schools as a community, we educate the kids as a community, we don't bill every family, we don't point to children who live in small apartments and tell them their family's not paying enough. That's not how public school works. So, if we don't say that we need each family to pay for their own education, maybe the idea being proposed is that it should be limited to those who pay some property taxes, large or small, but that's not what's being proposed. For example, we have clergy who live in town on tax-free land and send their children to public schools, but we're not suggesting sending them a bill. In fact, I've been told explicitly that this proposal is not to charge the children of clergy. Also, our district has a policy on providing education to homeless children. Nobody's suggesting that these kids be charged tuition. So, the idea that this is about paying property taxes or not paying property taxes is not correct. Under this proposal, public schools would be open to some families who don't pay property taxes, but not others. And it results in, if a Milton Academy teacher sends two kids to our schools, we charge them $24,000 per year. That's the same amount as what a $2 million home in Milton pays in property taxes each year. That's in the top 1.5% of homeowners in town, and it's more than five times what I personally pay the town for the education of my children. And these are teachers. I don't think they're paid that much. Moreover, what if one of these children is a special-needs child? Some special-needs children can only get what they require in a public school. How will they get the services they need? Now, I'm not trying to be ridiculous here. I know full well that nobody proposed this with the intent of denying special-needs children than education. I know the resident who proposed this idea. I've served on a committee with him. I know him to be very thoughtful and dedicated, and I appreciate his service. I know that the Pilot Committee and everyone here is trying to do what's right. I just worry that the full consequences of denying free public education to children in town has not been fully considered, and when it is considered, I expect this idea will be rejected. Now, there was talk at the last meeting about revising or tweaking this proposal, that maybe the final version would have the payment come in some other way, but I would say, in my opinion, this proposal doesn't need to be fixed, it needs to be eliminated. Any amount of tweaking around the edges might address some of the points that I've raised, but at its heart, this is a proposal to say that for some children, and only some children, public education comes with a price tag, and they don't have the same right as everyone else. That is not an idea that needs to be revised. It is an idea that needs to be rejected. I fully understand the financial issue between the town and the nonprofits is complex, and I don't have the answers. I appreciate that people have put a lot of work into solving that problem. I'm just afraid that in the zeal to address that issue, people have lost sight of what's important, and as a result, are inadvertently putting children in the middle of a fight where they don't belong. I know several Milton Academy families wanted to be here tonight. Some of them were uncomfortable speaking publicly about a subject where they feel they're being used as bargaining chips between their town and their employer. That's a terrible position to be in, and none of them asked for this. These people aren't the enemy, they're your constituents, and they're listening. They're listening to hear if they'll be singled out for a special fee that no one else in town, no one else in the state, has to pay, and they're listening to hear if their children are welcome in our public schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Funling. Anyone else for citizen speak? Seeing none, we will move on to item four on the agenda. Future meeting dates, we had sketched out three dates previously, July 24th, if necessary, August 7th, and August 21st. We have had a request from the Town Government Study Committee Chair to have a meeting with the Parks Commissioners to determine whether there is interest in the two boards in the Town Government Study Committee looking at consolidation for the purposes of the parks. Given that we don't have much for the 24th, and I think there is availability on the side of the Parks Commissioners, that is a date that we could satisfy the request of the Town Government Study Committee to look into that. So, unless there's any objection, I'd like to, and I don't expect that it'll be particularly a long meeting, but if there's no objection, I'd like to try to have that meeting on the 24th. Mr. Wells.
Well, I already noted my points on the discussion, but I will not be, because I didn't think we were going to meet the 24th, so I'm not available on the 24th, and I also will be out of the country on the 21st of August, which I think I had noted at a prior meeting.
Oh, okay, all right. So, all right, so do we want to try to move these meetings to accommodate...
You don't, I mean, you don't have to. I mean, you just, so I'm going to be out of the country in August from the 18th until September 2nd. So, I would not, I'd keep you, and now and there, I'd try to keep your schedule and...
Okay, okay, okay. All right, well, if, and perhaps, you know, if we get things done on the 7th, we, I'm just wondering whether we should try to meet on the 14th, but as I remember, there were other problems on August 14th, so I think, yeah, when we tried to schedule before. So, why don't we, why don't we try to keep them as they are and then, you know, do our best, maybe we won't need that meeting on the 21st.
So, what are we doing about the 24th of July? Are we rescheduling that?
I, you know, if we, I'm not sure if we can, because, I mean, I guess we could try for the 31st, if the Park, but we don't know if the Parks Commissioners can make it on. Is the 31st a better date, the next week, for a meeting with the Parks Commissioners?
I can do it. I can do either.
Do you want to, Richard is...
I might be able to do that, yeah.
Yeah, all right, and so maybe we'll check with the Parks Commissioner and see if we can do that on the 31st. Okay, so we'll try for the 31st. Okay, all right, so we'll try for the 31st, and then we'll go with the 7th and the 21st. There's one other item that, and it was a request from MPEG to prepare an opposition to an FCC order, the hearing of which is on August 1st. And so, I'm not sure if we meet on the 31st, we can get that, if we decide to do a letter in opposition to that rule, if we can get a letter in by the 1st, but...
Let's do by the 25th.
Let's do by the 25th of July. All right, well...
Is it a, Mr. Chair, is it a matter that simply a quick morning meeting could be done just to vote?
I believe so. I believe so, and I think we're going to hear about it tonight. We just don't have the letter, and it really isn't on the agenda for tonight. It came up rather fast, so, so I think, you know, if there is an appetite in the board for a quick morning meeting to review that item, that would, I think that would satisfy it.
I'm amenable to that.
So, okay. All right, so we'll find a meeting within the next, within the next week and a half to consider that, and again, you'll hear more about that when we take up the Comcast INET agreement. Okay, all right, so we're going to try 31st and then morning for MPEG. All right, anything else on future meeting dates? Seeing none, let's move on to the Traffic Commission recommendations, and Mr. Berkeley is here. I agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for having me. So, I'm going to present the recommendations from our June 17 meeting of the Traffic Commission. The first item is 7-9 Pleasant Street, which is the Bent's Building, so the Planning Board requirements for that renovation stipulated that they needed to present their on-street parking plan to the Traffic Commission for their approval. So, essentially, what it lays out is no parking on the even side, which is the left side, as you drive up Pleasant Street from Randolph Avenue up until the first driveway, and then on the right side, which is the side in front of the building, marking lanes for parking and then creating one handicap parking spot in front of the building. So, the Traffic Commission supported the plan, has submitted from the developer.
Maybe we might want to take, I don't know if we want to take these individually or...
Whichever you prefer.
Sir, why don't we take them individually, just in case there's questions and differences of opinion on individual, rather than just doing the aggregate? So, any questions, comments on this one? Yep, do we want to have a motion?
I'll make a motion to amendment to the traffic rules and orders, Article 5, Section 2, 7 to 9 Pleasant Street, post no parking on the even side of the street from Randolph Avenue to the driveway at number 18 Pleasant Street, and an amendment to Article 5, Section 12, post one handicap parking spot immediately south of the driveway entrance for 7 to 9 Pleasant Street, formerly known as the GH Bent Company Building. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Mr. Berkeley, next.
Okay, the second item was submitted to the Traffic Commission by the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association. It was a request to put in a restriction for a left turn on Hemlock Drive as you approach Blue Hill Avenue. This was, the background for this is that during the evening commute, as Canton Avenue queues, vehicles use Hemlock Drive to go around the queue and create a dangerous maneuver by taking a left onto Blue Hill Avenue, which is a high-speed roadway and very heavy volume at that time of day. So, the Traffic Commission supported that recommendation by the Neighborhood Association to create that restriction.
Questions, comments?
So, just, so this is, I get the 4 to 7 because it does gridlock, so this is if you're on Hemlock and no left turn onto Blue.
Correct.
So, you don't want them cutting across the southbound flow, which is backed up every day.
Yes, you have to cross the northbound lane of Blue Hill Avenue and merge into the southbound, which is typically heavy volume at that time of night, too. So, it only appears to be an issue during that evening commute.
Chase, do you happen to know when that, when Hemlock feeds into Blue Hill, depending on how many cars are queued up, can it brake left and brake right the queue, the line, or is it, is a car that's about to take a left-hand turn, will that stop every car behind it, or is there enough room for the other cars to pass to make the right?
Typically, the feedback we got from the neighborhood is that there's only maybe two or three cars queued up at any given time, so it's probably sporadic, depending on what's happening out on Blue Hill Avenue. It's kind of an ambiguous answer to give you there, but...
Is it a safety issue?
It's a safety issue, yes, so the maneuver of turning left onto Blue Hill Avenue, which is southbound, is the issue.
Okay, right on.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
So, I'll make a motion to amend amendments to the traffic rules and orders to amend Article 8, Section 22, Hemlock Drive, at the approach to Blue Hill Avenue, post no left turn from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Mr. Berkeley, next.
Okay, the third item was a request from the Chamber of Commerce in regards to parking in all of the business districts in town, and basically, the request is to standardize the two-hour parking. This is supported by the police chief and by the Traffic Commission, both from the enforcement end and the logistical end. So, many of the business districts have a variety of parking time restrictions where, within the span of one block, you may have 15 minutes, a half hour, one hour, two hour, and it's very difficult from the enforcement end to patrol that. And from the business district's end, their request stems from the concept that they'd like people to be able to park and visit numerous businesses without having to worry about moving their vehicle. So, we actually could table this, if you'd like, because the chamber has approached me since this was created. They have finished their parking study that they'd like to present to the Traffic Commission. They completed a study on their own and have recommendations that they'd like to formally present. We haven't seen that as a group yet, so, but the Traffic Commission does support standardizing to two-hour parking in all those districts as a concept.
So, these are additional recommendations that the chamber is going to make in addition to the standardized two-hour parking?
Yes, yeah, and I think it'll be more defined about what actual streets and the areas in the service zone plays into this, too, because they're service zone placements where they believe that they could be better optimized for parking for businesses and they're moving service zones, so...
Question, Mr. Wells.
So, just a point of fact for you. I'll make a prediction that you'll be back here within a year, asking us to amend this, because we've had everything from two to one to 30 to 15s for some of them that all came as a result of the chamber. I'm, it's your recommendation, I'm going to go with your recommendation, but I predict you'll be back, because what's going to happen, particularly the ones with a quick turnover, particularly the food places, they're going to come back to you and say, okay, now no one can get to the front of mine because Mr. Wells is going to stay in there for two hours. That's how, I believe East Milton is two hour on one side, one hour on the other. Some of them have 15s, I can't remember the central, but I'm with it, but...
Yeah.
You haven't heard the end of it.
It would be convenient to be able to just kind of broad-brush stroke two hours, but it likely will end up being that we need to address it on a case-by-case basis.
You will. Ms. Khan.
Yeah, I'd actually like us to defer this one, because I, kind of similar to what Richard's point is, there's been a lot of discussions over the years at the Planning Board, at a lot of different committees in town, about whether having a mix of short-term into up to two-hour parking makes sense for some of the vendors. I know, so this would apply to all business districts, so I know down at Central Avenue. We've got, we've done a lot of calls over the years from Tino's Pizza and some of the other restaurants down there, where there's 15-minute parking in front of them, and there's other people parking there for two hours, so that prohibits the people coming in for pickups and takeout orders. And I think we've had similar requests from East Milton and complaints about that. And frankly, I thought that when the idea that we couldn't get parking on the East Milton deck, I thought that one of the, kind of the ways we were going to try to address that was by doing different lengths of parking, some further away from the business district, make it up to two hours, a little bit closer to the retail stores, as Richard mentioned, a little bit shorter period of time. So, I really would like to hear whether the Planning Board or any of, even the MPIC, whether there's any thoughts that some of those committees have on this issue. I mean, obviously, I have a lot of respect for the Traffic Commission, the police chief, and the DPW director, and maybe, maybe this is the way to go, but there's been so much discussion about this over the years, I think we need to vet it a little bit more at our board, and make sure that we're giving the Planning Board and others a chance to let us know whether they have any issues with it.
Certainly fair, yep.
Mr. Wells.
Off just to Katie's point, and now that you've said it, I think I agree with deferring it, but just the central hour business alone, so by making it all two-hour, someone who has just quick business in the city jumps on the trolley, shoots in, gets back out within a very close to the two-hour limit, and the point is that they didn't do anything in the central hour business district except free parking for two hours. And I think the area of parking, as we all know, and you've learned very quickly here in your time here, there's always pressure on our on-street parking here, and I think fairness, at least I have always viewed as fairness, needs to come into all the players, and it is. Katie's right, it's a, it's a very diverse usage makeup, both in East Milton and, and I was really thinking East Milton, I wasn't even thinking, so soon as she mentioned Central Avenue, I'm like, two hours, it reminded me right away of residents coming complaining that, in businesses, that people just park for two hours, on the train, come back out, and all you do is take a pocket, you took an on-street parking space for free.
Yeah, that's, I'd really like to see the report from the chamber, just to make sure that they've cut all the businesses on board before.
I'd make a motion to defer this, if, to go on, Ms. Khan, if the members agree.
I'll second your motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, comments? I will say that, just as a matter of statutory construction, I think this is a little bit ambiguous, and to the extent we get more definition, I think it's, I think it would be good just from a, just from a, you know, putting in the actual amendment, I think that a little more specificity would be helpful, so I agree with, I agree with that for the reasons that Richard and Katie stated, and also for that reason, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Chase? Chase?
You're welcome.
Thanks. I'm not trying to put, but
I think the main crux was just to make sure that you understood where the Traffic Commission felt about it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chase. Item six, update from the Youth Task Force Chair, Sarah Callahan. Sarah?
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you for, hello, thank you for inviting me here tonight for an update of what we've been doing for the past year. I can't believe it's actually been a year since this task force was formed. I'd like to start by thanking the members of the Youth Task Force for their commitment and hard work over the past twelve months. This is a group made up of teen and adult volunteers, elected officials, and town employees. The breadth of perspectives represented has been a tremendous asset in accomplishing so much over the past year. The group, through its diversity, is representative of the community we live in and the youth that we are all committed to serving, which is great. I know you'll be discussing reappointments a little bit later in today's agenda, but I wanted to highlight four members who will not be continuing with the Youth Task Force for this upcoming year, and I wanted to publicly thank them. Gwyneth Souter, recently graduated from Milton High School this past June. Gwyneth has been an incredibly engaged student and member of the Milton community, serving not only on the Youth Task Force, but as a student representative to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, core stakeholder group, as president of the Milton High SAD chapter, as a student leader and an honor student. She was the varsity tennis captain, she played oboe in the school band, she dances competitively, and is a member of her parish youth group. Gwyneth did all of this while holding down a part-time job as a hostess at the Bowery and doing some babysitting along the way. Her next stop is Iona College in New York, where she's going to do a five-year master's course in psychology and counseling. Actually emailed her today to make sure I had her bio to, to be able to represent her well, and she said, "I'm hoping to come back to Massachusetts and be a therapist for kids who have gone through trauma," or a school therapist. I think we should all be very grateful to Gwyneth for her commitment and keep track of her name, because she's going to be doing great things in her future. Winston Daly is a parent volunteer. His daughter's a rising sixth grader, so his first years as a volunteer here in Milton were at the Tucker School. He was on-site counsel for three years and worked on initiatives to ensure all students had access to co-curricular activities. He formed the Tucker Basketball League and coached some teams there. He helped to connect with the lacrosse program and other youth sports leagues, and he has methodically analyzed which students are not engaged in our town youth sports leagues and problem-solved to figure out a way to get them connected. Winston serves on Citizens for a Diverse Milton and took the lead on fundraising and supporting the Tucker Group Lessons Program to get affordable instrument lessons to Tucker students. He's an all-around outstanding advocate for students. Paul Demano and Officer Maria Martin, I'm sure need no introduction. Both are town employees who know better than most of us here what's going on with the teens of Milton. Having them serve this past year has been a huge asset to the process. Both of their schedules make it difficult to continue on the task force, but we know how to get ahold of them, and we most certainly will in the upcoming year to make sure things are, are working as they should. We will be keeping the perspective of both Parks and Rec through the commissioner appointment and also the school resource officer, as we still have Officer Chris Potts serving on the task force. So you have the list of members who are seeking reappointment. That is actually just missing a middle school student. We haven't identified anybody at this point. Our librarian, who works closely with a lot of middle school students, is thinking about it, as are other folks, so hopefully we'll come back, or middle school students may apply to join the task force, and you'll have that in front of you down the road in the near future.
And so any, just to interrupt briefly, Sarah, anyone who wants to apply
Yep.
can just get on the town website and send an application. So any middle school students out there who want to be on the Youth Task Force
Absolutely.
just let us know.
Yep. So before I move on to talk about the Milton Teen Center at the First Congregational Church, which I know is the main agenda item, I'd like to just give another shout-out to Rep. Driscoll, who secured the $30,000 grant in this past year's state budget for the design of a teen center. Just to give you an update, this grant was administered by the Town Planning Department, and the Youth Task Force worked alongside that office and the town's Chief Procurement Officer, Arlene Zuniga, to fulfill it. We conducted an RFP and received six applications from firms. We interviewed four firms and ultimately awarded the contract to B.H. Plus A, an architecture firm in Boston. They worked during a two-month period, May and June. It was a very quick, quick process. They worked diligently in three areas. In community outreach, they conducted three visioning sessions with students, first with middle school students, then high school students, had a third session with other community members to gather feedback on what the community wants. They conducted site visits. They spent two afternoons driving all around Milton, getting to know the town, looking at various parcels of land and buildings, and they also conducted some site analysis. They did more in-depth assessments of many of those sites. The results of that assessment will be detailed in their final report. The report is still in draft form. We expect it'll be finalized over the next month, and that they will be in for a presentation to you all, probably in early September, one of your meetings. So lastly, I want to give an update on the Milton Teen Center at the First Congregational Church. The Congregational Church was incredibly successful at raising over $400,000 in a very short period of time, so I think a huge congratulations to them. That's for the renovation of the lower level of the church. Reverend John Allen and his congregation obviously are very committed to not only the space, but the idea that the space be available to the youth of Milton, and for that, we're very grateful. We're thrilled that the town of Milton will be entering into a lease with the church in order to establish a drop-in teen center for middle school students, and that hopefully will happen as early as the middle of September of this coming school year, of 2019. So the Parks and Rec Department, the commissioners, and the Milton Youth Task Force are currently working on a number of items related to that drop-in teen center, working on what staffing structure might look like, membership details, fee structure, rules and regulations for teens, liability waiver for parents, and other details, such as how to integrate this program with the current middle school I.D. program. Job posting for a coordinator has just been launched on the town website. I understand that there are, now I forget if there were two or three, at least two, I think three applications had been received as of this afternoon, which is two in three days, that's what it was. And so the, this will be the focus of our next couple of meetings, the Youth Task Force, to make sure that there's a smooth opening come September. We are also collaborating with the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. They're currently putting together a new Milton teen group. Hasn't even been launched yet, but the idea from their end is to form a group who can be engaged in any number of things, both around town and in the larger community. The thought is that the Youth Task Force can have access to that group on a fairly regular basis, especially over the first months of its existence, to help inform the work that's happening and the programming that's happening at the teen center at the First Congregational Church. So we're very excited about that. Will help us have, in addition to the students who are appointed to the task force, it will just help us have more regular and intentional interaction and feedback from, from other teens around town, so we're very happy about that. That's the update, so I'm happy to
Excellent. Questions, comments from the members?
Just to start, are we talking September first, an opening?
September. I don't think it's September first, yep.
Not a date.
Not a date, yep.
I think, as I remember from the meeting, they're talking about maybe mid-September.
September twelfth.
September twelfth is what they're thinking of.
It's an occupancy date, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's the occupancy date.
Occupancy date, yep.
They're going to get for that.
That's right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, great. Sarah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we have a, we have a couple of guests here for item twelve, which is the Comcast Renewal License and INET Fiber Use Agreement. So without objection, I'd like to take item twelve out of order. We have with us this evening, and I'm going to ask all three of you to come up, Mike Lynch, who I think is going to have something to say about the INET agreement, Bill Solomon, who is our consultant on the Comcast agreement, and the representative from Comcast, Kathy Maloney, who is the senior manager of government relations and regulatory affairs. So, Mike, do you want to come up, or do you want to just wait until the INET?
Just wait, after.
Just wait, okay. Kathy, do you want to just come up, just in case there's any questions? All right, so this is something that I think throngs have been waiting for, for many months. We've been, we've been anxious to get to where we think
Throngs, all right, good throngs.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Throngs of Miltonites and Miltonians have been waiting for this to happen for, for these many months, as we've reported the, the progress. So I have stated before, kind of the highlights of the business points, and I will, I will, I will note those again, and then I'll ask Mr. Solomon to add anything that he thinks is important and necessary, and Ms. Maloney, if she wishes, and then questions and comments. The essence of the proposal, or the contracts as drafted, is that our, the amount, the amount payable to the town will increase from 4.35% to 5% of Comcast revenues, which should equal about $700,000 in addition to the town over the course of the deal, the ten-year deal. It includes a capital payment for infrastructure, the amount of $400,000 that is payable over three years. It includes an H.D. channel for Milton within thirty-six months, I believe it is.
Yes.
Within thirty-six months, and we will be the first, I think we're still, we were before, I think we're the first, still the first town in Massachusetts to have this. Revere hasn't, but Revere's a city, so. It also includes a dark fiber agreement, and our understanding, at least this was, and it may still be the first in New England, which allows us to continue to use the broadband fiber network under a five-year agreement for which we will pay a nominal fee of $1,000 a month. The benefits of this, obviously, are the additional revenues to the town, the H.D. channel, continued use of the INET, which was an issue when we initially were having discussions, and through the good offices and the goodwill of Comcast, we were able to come to a good agreement on that, and to continue Comcast's support for that. And, and so I think those are the highlights from the business side, and, and I'll ask Bill to fill in what I missed.
Thank you, Mike. If I call you Mike, having worked so long together, Mike D. and Mike Z. Firstly, thank you for having us here today, of course. It was a long process, and frankly, we would not have been able to be here if it wasn't for the work of the Milton team. Mike Dennehy involved all hours of the day, Mike Zulis completely involved on the details, financial, legal, and otherwise, Mike Lynch, Access Director, and the, I'm always so bad with names, remember that with the two, Jim Segroy
Jim Segroy.
On the town I.T. side and the school I.T.
Bob Patterson.
Both very, very helpful, because the, at the end of history, the biggest issue that had to be addressed, and was addressed very thoughtfully over a long period of time, looking at different options, was the institutional network, as mentioned. That's the lifeblood of the town's operation, it's the lifeblood of PEG access, and with Comcast's position changing over time, there were options the town had available. Comcast was willing to go in different directions, and we actually are the first town in Massachusetts, or city, with this model of this leasing at a very low cost, that has a number of benefits, even besides the INET in the, in the modern cable world. There are now folks who are following that, but in order to break that ground, it took a lot of work. The only thing I would add on the summary is that, in addition to, as Mike said, the H.D. channel being provided within the thirty-six months, that at the same time, your standard definition PEG access channels will be upgraded to what's called S.D., S.D.I., a higher level of picture and sound, so that those channels will also significantly improve in addition to the H.D. channel that's provided, and you have options how you want to use that H.D. channel. Other than that, I don't think I have anything to add, we'll talk about separately. There's a senior discount letter, I'll let, if you like, I can address quickly.
Actually, why don't you, why don't you go ahead, Bill, and talk about the senior discount?
And remind me, does the town currently have a senior discount?
No.
Okay, so that, it'd be the first time in the, you know, the town administrator, the board's representatives, Mike's made clear that that was an important issue for the, for the town. So we have a senior discount, albeit it's limited, it's standard, it's voluntary on the part of the company, they agree to it. It's $2 off of standard or digital starter, or something. There's financial qualifications, but I appreciate Kathy and Comcast agreeing to the expanded list of financial qualifications that's in the Milton letter, that's not in most letters. So I think that's a, that's a, that's a plus. Going forward, the PEG access support, 5% from 4.35% of gross revenues of the company to 5%, it's a significant increase, and capital, as Mike said, of $400,000, last license, and in fact, this is the first license that has designated PEG capital, as Mike Lynch reminds me. And so that's a plus that'll allow the investment in, in the facilities and the equipment going forward. And my final comment is, that's needed, because if, remember, if you were at the public hearing, Milton has a tremendous public access program, but a tremendous use of that and appreciation of it. That, because the hearing was so great, and Kathy also knows of Milton, and, and what you've done with access, that made this license doable, because Comcast appreciates people who use its system to make it a better company and to make cable a better product. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions going from the board.
Mr. Wells?
So seniors are some of our biggest viewers. They watch at home every week. So if you could maybe just, I've never heard the word digital starter, so I don't know what, is that a, just a basic package?
It's the entry-level
Actually, could, I'm sorry, Kathy, could you just talk into the microphone, so everyone can hear it?
Absolutely. It's the entry-level digital
Package.
package. There is a lower tier of service, I always like to mention, because in terms of affordability, it's not covered under the discount, but it doesn't really need to be. It's basic broadcast, it's around $10 a month.
A month, okay.
So that's always there, always has been. But this is specifically because we have so many people who take our digital services the entry-level
Right.
package. It's around $60 a month, and that, fifty to sixty, I'm not sure exactly what the price point is, but in that.
So it's a $24 a year savings?
Yeah.
On a twelve-month basis, okay.
It's something, it's basic.
Okay, no, thank you. I just, knowing how many seniors watch this, like, they're probably, what's digital starter?
Right.
And so, that's just, I just wanted to have you over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll say.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to ask Mike Lynch, because I think Mike has something to say with respect to the INET agreement, and we can, he can say it in this context, and then, and then perhaps we can, we can move to votes. Mike, is this a good time for you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be very quick.
And so, so Mike Lynch is the executive director of the Milton Public and Educational Access Television.
Yeah, so I just wanted to update the board quickly. The INET agreement, you know, it looks good, and I talked with Bill, and I think that we're in good shape. I just wanted to let the board know that there is a potential future issue with relation to the FCC. They just released their draft agenda item for August. The proposed rule changes are on there. I'll be back at the August seventh meeting to update you more as to what happens at the meeting, but one of the proposals is that the INET will no longer be free. So we're getting a very good deal with Comcast, and I think the agreement should be signed, but in the future, we just really need to look at being ready for installing our own INET. I just wanted to let the board know, because we rely on it so much, that you can't submit a letter of comment to the proposed change to the law. It just has to be in by July 25th, so I just wanted to let the board know. We'll, you know, we're going to submit a letter on the other issues, but just because this has been something that Milton has been discussing for a while, and at the end of the five-year agreement, you know, we will need to think about what to do.
And so, and so that's what we discussed under our future meeting dates, so perhaps we'll, we'll put together a letter for the board to consider, and, and get a, a short meeting between now and the 25th to consider that and see if we, see if we want to do that.
Chairman, just a quick point, if I could, on that. On the, on the first page of the INET agreement, there's a whereas provision that we drafted in order to get ahead of this issue and that Mike's familiar with, and I just, having the issue raised, I just want to briefly address that. And the, the point of, of this is that the FCC ruling will allow, unless overturned, which is possible, will allow the cable company, if it so chooses, it doesn't have to, if it so chooses, to count against the franchise fee, now a 5% franchise fee, certain requirements, the FCC says contributions, but that's a loaded term, requirements that are in the cable license. Of course, the people on the cable side believe that's an important parcel of the, what has to be provided by a cable company. But But this, this agreement is a, is somewhat separate from the cable license. It's related, it's, but because it's a separate agreement, albeit under the same rubric of development or approval, it's not, the requirements here would not count toward the franchise fee. And Comcast has acknowledged that these requirements would not be something that they would count to the franchise fee, and they've acknowledged it in the agreement as we drafted it, and I just want to briefly read that language, which says in the second whereas, that it's agreed to in the interest of both parties here too, including to ensure that the cost and/or value of the said institutional network services are not placed upon or incurred by Milton Cable subscribers, nor otherwise counted toward the franchise fee established in the 2019 cable license agreement. So currently, the INET cost is passed through to subscribers, that will not happen going forward. But more importantly, it's acknowledging that this requirement is not something that they can count to the franchise fee, and therefore reduce the franchise fee. So it's addressed right here in the agreement, and they've acknowledged that, and from their perspective, they don't even think it's necessary, because it's clear it's not a franchise requirement, but the town felt it'd be helpful, let's just say that. So that going forward, and now, the town has protected that this, this value and cost of this is not going to be taken away from the 5% that's paid to the town. Because the door's open a little, I won't go long into this, but I do want to say there's a separate issue that Mike had raised about cable service to public buildings. And in the FCC order, the cable company could, if it, if it wanted to, subtract the market value of that cable service, which is free, which has been provided for 40 years, which is required under state law to be provided for free, but they could count that toward the franchise fee. It's a little different than saying they're charging for it, but they could say that counts to the 5%. Whether they do that or not, they'll have to decide, I frankly feel they may not, I don't see the upside of charging schools and, for services that are provided for 40 years, but, you know, these are corporate decisions that'll be made. However, what is clear, and because of the good relationship between the parties, we, on the town side, didn't feel it was necessary to state, but I thought it'd be helpful to state it here at the hearing, is that if, for some reason, Comcast chose to subtract the market value of the cable service to the town and school public buildings, the town could decide and say, well, you know what, that's a lot of money, and frankly, we choose not to have that service, rather than have that market value deducted from the franchise fee. And unlike one town where we put this in writing, and we considered to put in the license, we're not doing it here, because we on the town side believe that, you know, Comcast would understand that, and if the town decided that it didn't want that service because it wasn't cost-effective, or was too expensive, then, I'm sure Comcast would say, that's fine, we won't provide it. We're a long way from that, but I just wanted to point that out, that going forward, there are issues to deal with, but I do think that those things can be worked out, and I think the town would be protected on the value of that cable service if Comcast decided it wanted it, in effect, deducted from your 5%. So with that.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Wells?
Just one question, the letter that is being proposed that we sign?
It's accepted, I believe.
Accepted, or accept?
I think we.
Is this something we should copy, or send a separate letter, or a parallel letter to Congressman Lynch? Would he weigh in on, is this something he should be aware of, or weigh in on?
Yeah, and this is on another Gen I, I'm correct, yeah.
This would be, this would be on the opposition to the FCC, absolutely, Richard, absolutely, yes.
So perhaps we do both?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, in the letter that we put together, if we, if we decide to go that route, we can, we can copy all of our congressional representatives.
Well, all of them, right, oh, okay. It just, I, you're talking about something that's originating in Washington, and I think it's just proactive of us to, if they're not already aware, make sure they're aware of what's going on, because what you're talking about could be pretty significant.
That's right, although, like I said, on that issue, I believe the town will, between the, what Comcast's corporate responsibility and sense of obligation, and what, do the right thing, together with the fact that the town would have certainly a option practically to say, we don't want to pay for this, I think the town's fully protected. So as we sit here today, full protection on the INET, full protection, I believe, on cable service to public buildings, so I see no risk at all in either of those to the 5% franchise fee, which you need to support your PEG access. So I think you're in, on those, you're in good shape. Other issues, we deal with one by one. Very final point, again, I just want to thank Comcast, that we wouldn't have this license if it wasn't for the team, Kathy Maloney, Jerry Buckley, who is the director Kathy works with, personally involved, came here to Milton, I think, and folks above them who are also involved in this, so I wanted to very sincerely say, the real pleasure working with Kathy and the Comcast team. And cable goes a long way back, they're local companies, as they say, if you wanted Google here, or Facebook, or Apple, invited them two weeks, they wouldn't be here. Comcast is here because they began as a small company in an area where you sit down and you work it out, and no one does it better than Ms. Maloney, I can say, a tough negotiator, that's why it took a long time, and a lot of compromises made by all parties, but I wanted to thank Kathy and the Comcast team.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Just one comment, I want to thank the team of the Mike, starting with Mike Zulus, Mike Dennehy, Mike Lynch.
Yes.
And all the people on the Milton side, I'm guessing included Christine Stanton and other people, probably on the staff that we haven't even mentioned, so thank you to all of you. I think when we had the ascertainment hearing, we had a three-member board at that time, so this has been going on for quite a while.
Yes.
A lot of work by a lot of you, so thank you for all of your efforts.
Mr. Wells?
Just a follow-up to Katie's comment, Mr. Zulus, I propose you should make the motion. You did all the, you guys did the work.
Sure, sure, I will do that. I will move to grant the subject cable television renewal license with the effective date of July 1, 2019, to Comcast of Milton, Inc. All terms and conditions contained in this renewal license have been agreed to by Comcast. Comcast, by and through its authorized representative, shall execute this renewal license as set out on the signature page of the renewal license. So the, the motion, the last couple of things were really surplusage, the motion is to grant the renewal license to Comcast effective July 1, 2019. Who has a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Second, I'll move to recognize, acknowledge, and accept the senior citizens discount letter from Comcast dated July 17, 2019, and signed by Comcast Senior Manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs, Kathy, Catherine Maloney.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And finally, to enter into the Town of Milton, Massachusetts Comcast of Milton, Inc. Institutional Network Fiber Use Agreement, dated July 17, 2019, with a five-year term beginning on July 1, 2019, which is the effective date and ending on June 30, 2024, unless terminated earlier in accordance with the terms and conditions of the agreement. Again, all terms and conditions have been agreed to by Comcast, and Comcast shall execute this agreement as set forth. So the motion again is to just enter into the agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Let us know what we need to do, we'll figure out the signatures and everything, but we'll get everything buttoned up.
Oh, yeah, buttoned up here.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get anything buttoned up, so thank you all.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
All right, so, we have another guest who is here, and so without objection, I'd like to take item 11 out of order, which is the discussion of an Assistant Town Administrator Position, including the Town Government Study Committee's Appointed Treasurer Proposal, and I believe Rick Neely is here, may have something to say on this. And I think this originated with a discussion of the Assistant Town Administrator Position, so perhaps Mr. Dennehy can start, and then, oh, do we need to do?
If we could sign one of these documents that they can take with them to get Comcast to, yeah.
Okay, all right. Apologize, Rick, just one second. Do we know where the signature page is?
It is, sorry.
It's not all the way in the back. Oh, there it is, all right. So you know what, I'm going to tab it, so.
Okay.
I'm going to have a poster.
I did.
So, all right. So I'm going to sign this one. All right, there you go. All right. We'll be with you in just one second. Okay, great, oops, sorry. Sorry, I ripped it out of here. All right, so, again, the discussion to begin is on the Assistant Town Administrator Position. Just give the other members a moment to finish signing.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Dennehy to kick off the discussion.
Sure, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Neely, for coming in as well. This conversation started probably in my first quarter here with the Town of Milton. There was a position that had been suggested in the override to 2018 contingent budget with respect to an ATA slash Chief Financial Officer position that was derived out of a 2013 DOR report that was done with the town. At the time, I was new to town hall, and I wasn't quite sure what that position would entail. We did hold on to that position for two years, it was, it was part of the override, the intention was to use that to be a large percentage of the Chief Financial Officer's position. Should we get to that point? Obviously, the election in April, the referendum failed, so I'm basically asking my board for next steps in some direction with respect to that Assistant Town Administrator's position, keeping in mind that the 2013 DOR report, which, which I find to be a very relevant document, the town has done a very good job of working their way through the suggestions by the state agency. And so here we are at a bit of a crossroads, we have this position, we still have a need to find out what the structural deficiencies are in the town. I think everyone knows, based on the last two or three budget sessions and the operational override we had two years ago, the shortfall we came across with, with the modest budget increases this year that were requested, and, and the recommendations for reduction. Fast forward six or eight months, and we have exorbitant solid waste and trash fees, and just, just basically trying to get a grip on, on what, what can be done to, you know, eliminate some of the structural deficiencies with, with our town's finances. So figured it'd be a good jumping off point to start this discussion and figure out where, what my board and the Town Government Study Committee and other groups might think could be a direction.
So I'm going to ask, before Rick, to see if any of the members have any comments, questions, before, before Rick gives his thoughts.
Not yet.
I'm sorry?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'm with Melon, I'll wait until after Rick speaks.
All right, Mr. Neely, from the Town Government Study Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mike, and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here. In terms of the position itself, and in terms of the Town Treasurer position, the position of the Town Government Study Committee is that an appointed treasurer is something that is widely accepted across the Commonwealth. It's prevalent, it's been accepted in 80% of the towns in Massachusetts, it's a best practice, it would eliminate fragmentation that currently exists in the town financial structure, and we strongly believe that the board should put the question back on the ballot at the annual election next spring. And we believe that with or without a CFO position, that an appointed treasurer is essential to have a coordinated financial approach in town government. So whether this position gets filled as a CFO or anything, the treasurer's position should still become part of the team. So we really think that we should go forward with that approach, and it does not make sense to fill the Assistant Town Administrator as a CFO. If you look at the job description, which I brought with me, you'll see that the job description is essentially gutted if, in fact, you do not have the treasury function and the cash management and the investment management reporting up to the CFO. If it's independent, there's not a candidate that is going to be a CFO. I've been a treasurer, I've been a CFO, I've been a controller, you don't have a CFO that doesn't have responsibility for cash, doesn't have responsibility for investments, doesn't have responsibility for all the other functions. So at this point, you would be very limited, and it really wouldn't make sense to pay a CFO salary for a person that doesn't have the CFO responsibilities. So I honestly believe, at this point, the committee believes that it doesn't make sense to fill the CFO position until such time as the functions that belong in a CFO's job description are essentially part of the financial management team. So again, the first step should be, and it, this past spring was an effort at that, and we think it should continue, many towns in Massachusetts took multiple efforts at the ballot box to get the question accepted. It would be incumbent upon all of us to do a better job of educating the public as to the reasons and the best practices for municipal financial practices. We did a very good job with the town meeting, we overwhelmingly supported the change in the treasurer's position, we didn't do as good a job with the electorate. And obviously, with only 13% of the voters showing up for the election, you know, that made it more difficult. So I think really what we're looking for is to have the board, over the next couple of months, between now and the time you close the warrant, or the ballot, I should say, really, next, whenever it's January, should decide between now and January to put it back on the ballot. In the meantime, this position, you know, you may want to use it for administration, you may want to use the funds for administration, but the trouble is, if you hire a person that is strictly an administrator without the financial expertise and the qualifications, at some point in time, you're going to want it to become a CFO, and how do you get rid of the, you know, how do you change from the person who's an administrator to a person who's really supposed to be a CFO? So you're sort of stuck with this position in terms of trying to fill it in the capacity that was originally intended. So, and at the same time, with all the budget shortfalls, it may be that you don't have the funds available in the subsequent fiscal year. It may be that the $85,000 or whatever it is is needed to help cover the shortfall due to recycling or the trash, whatever. So you actually may be boxed by the financial situation as much as we are by waiting for the treasurer's position. Ultimately, the town's going to make this an appointed position, the question is when. And we ought to join the other 80% of the towns that have done that and get up to speed with it. And you remember, that was a recommendation of the Department of Revenue, which has done surveys and has provided consulting advice to municipalities across the state, and it's the, certainly, there was the recommendation of the Department of Revenue in 2013 to do what we've done. That's sort of a long-winded answer to your question.
Questions, comments from the members?
We're not voting on this tonight.
No, there's no, there's no vote, this, this is on the, on the agenda for discussion, and, you know, Mr. Neely had mentioned that the Town Government Study Committee is interested in this, so I think they, I think they're interested in, and that's why, why you see it today, but it's just on for discussion, just for, among the members, so there's no vote on for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I might as well, so I reached out to Sean Cronin at the State Division of Local Services in the governor's administration, he put me in touch with a gentleman, he used to be the CFO for Brookline, and basically, the conversation was, you know, we understand that there is a problem with the financial structure of the town, and I don't think we can wait for the referendum to pass. You know, the conversation talked about using a portion of that funding to hire a consultant to come in and take a look, a little lower than 30,000 feet, and find out, you know, what's working and what's not working, and my concern is that you bring a consultant in here, and for X amount of dollars, they may tell us what we already know, which is, you know, there's, there's not much development going on in town, our schools are, you know, at capacity or nearing capacity, so I'm, I'm asking for your help with, with this. Do we take a look at consulting and bringing someone in in the short term, not spending the entire amount, as Mr. Neely said, because of some of the budget shortfalls we have this year, but just have an outside expert come in and take a deep dive into, into some of these budgets and some of the operations, and just see if that will be worthwhile, or is it just, you know, are we, are we kind of throwing money away to realize the problem that most of us understand it to be in town?
Yeah, I guess I would say that, you know, obviously, the Board of Selectment and the School Committee joined the Town Government Study Committee back in 2013 to request the Department of Revenue to conduct the study. A fellow named Blake was the guy who did the study. It seems to me they covered a number of topics, the report was pretty lengthy. I think you really, if you want to use the funds for consulting, you ought to make sure that we're not. the School Committee joined the Town Government Study Committee back in 2013 to request the Department of Revenue to conduct the study. A fellow named Blake was the guy who did the study. It seems to me they covered a number of topics. The report was pretty lengthy. I think you really, if you want to use the funds for consulting, you ought to make sure that we're not duplicating the effort that was done by the Department of Revenue. And it may be a specific project-based consulting you want done versus the oversight. We have done a good job of implementing many of the recommendations of that study. So if you go back and check off the boxes, almost all of the boxes really have been checked off, with the exception of the conversion of the treasurer's position from elected to appointed. So I think maybe the focus would be, if there's a specific project that you need assistance on, there are certain experts in municipal finance that have either worked for the state or other towns, or they sometimes have been advisors to banks, you know, municipal financial advisors. So that's my thought in terms of what consideration. I just don't want to duplicate the efforts of the DOR, but you certainly could do it project-based.
Rick, other than, you know, that DOR report from 2013, I know it's critical and it's been mentioned several times just now here and in other points too. So the two, the big three, as I call them, are this one, obviously, moving from three to five, a three-member board to a five-member board, and moving to a strong administrator. But other than those three, what are the other recommendations from that report that the town has implemented?
Well, I think a key one was strengthening the Audit Committee. So the Audit Committee one was a substantial change. We really provided more independence for the Audit Committee. And the Audit Committee now reports to town meeting. I mean, if you look in the past, the Audit Committee was almost, they were behind the scenes. The Audit Committee, Mrs. White has been, Ms. White has been at the town meeting making a report the last three town meetings. And they actually have more independence in terms of selecting the auditors, reviewing and working with the auditors. So that, I think, was one of the key ones. We had other recommendations for the IT Committee, which I believe is working at this point. Hopefully, they'll come in with some recommendations in the near future. So those are some of the other examples on that.
Just if I might add, we hired a chief procurement officer. That was one of the recommendations. We went to the purchase order system, which is now working well. All departments online.
Is that COMBIS?
No, it's soft write.
Soft write. We went to paperless payroll. We went to bi-weekly payroll. There were a lot, there was some low-hanging fruit that we just did to bolster the systems. Any other questions, comments, thoughts, directions?
Tell Mr. Neely to go enjoy the rest of his summer.
Well, I agree with Rick that it's really a matter of when, not if, that we're going to go to an elected, from an elected to an appointed treasurer. Because, you're right, I mean, that's what all the research has shown, is that the majority of towns have gone in this direction. State Department of Revenue recommended it to the town, and it is best practice. It's unfortunate that we lost the ballot question, but again, when you have 13% turnout, when you have zero contested townwide races on the ballot, you know, and there was, there was an educational effort in a campaign. They grew up around it, but it was, it got started late, and there was not a lot of interest in the town election this year with no contested races. So was it Hingham, Rick, the town, that took three times to pass on the ballot?
Yeah, Hingham's taken three times. Other towns have taken multiple efforts. So it does take a period of time to educate the voters why it makes sense to do it.
Yeah, and I think it would be interesting to try to explore either with Hingham or some of the other communities, what do they do differently to get it passed the second or third time that they passed it? Was there a longer or an educational process that started earlier? Or how did they conduct their educational campaign? So I think, I think we should explore that. There was just a lot of misinformation that was out there in the April election. I read in a column in the Milton Times that said that the treasurer should remain independent because it serves an independent audit function. Treasurer has zero audit function. Treasurer's a cash management function, not an investment manager, but not audit function. So that sort of misinformation that really was out there, that people really didn't realize. And I'm not sure that we got the word out enough that this was something that the State Department of Revenue has really suggested that Milton go in the direction of. The question is, do we put it on the April ballot? Obviously, that's a question for another night. But I do think that's, we need to, we need to educate the residents of the town as to why this change is important to make. And I agree with you. It's a question of when, not if. In terms of the, in terms of the direction on this, you know, I mean, one thing to think about, and I think I might have mentioned this to either Rick or to Mike, is do you, in the meantime, while we're, while we're trying to work towards getting the treasurer to become an appointed position and make that part of the team reporting up to the CFO, do we take a short-term approach where maybe you hire someone who's worked in, is a financial director or CFO in another community, maybe at the end of their career, looking for a short-term, a year or two, to come in and help the town in terms of its financial management, but is not looking to be here long-term? Do we try an approach like that? That's one possibility.
Well, certainly, you could, you know, have someone come in and institutionalize the financial forecast. So let me give you an example. When I was a selectman, myself and the town accountant did the five-year forecast. When I left, there was a five-year forecast in place. It disappeared. If you get somebody back in here that gets it set up, puts it on the computer, uses all the advanced databases, you know, in those days, we were on just Excel. Somebody can come in and set this thing up so that whenever you do get the CFO, it can be picked up pretty quickly. And in the interim, unfortunately, you get the existing, you know, obviously, the existing team, Mike and the town accountant, we're gonna have to carry it on. So, but at least maybe get somebody to set it up and get it so that it's running, brings in the revenue assumptions and the expense assumptions, and does a model that goes out there and takes into consideration the potential of the new schools.
Yeah, and of course, we did have a five-year plan done about three years ago, and it's a matter of updating it. And once you have it in place, it should be easy to update year to year, because you're rolling the numbers forward and addressing any new developments. But we need to get that back on track.
Mr. Wells?
I think Mr. Dennehy's point, however it's done, is a proactive one, and we could take some of that money and, to Katie's point, do this. As you know, I just spent the last week around a lot of people with a lot of money, and listening to just how they talk about forecasting is something they talk about constantly, constantly. So maybe we do that. And I think, I'm sorry, I think you could do that, Michael. I think you could come up with an idea and come back to us and tell us how you think you might want to do this, and how you think this could, could help.
Ms. Collins?
Well, I think what Mr. Neely was saying about a project-based approach also dovetails well with administrative, Administrator Dennehy's, I think, desire to look into certain areas operationally. And I think we should really consider that. But take a targeted approach so that when we are ready, the funds are there. And I think that the forecast also, hopefully, will be easier to pull together because we have the ClearGov now populated. Is that helpful?
It is, yeah. And that's a great point. So we've been, Town Accountant has been working diligently to upload FY18 through FY, sorry, FY15 through FY18's financial information to ClearGov, which is the software application that not only shows transparencies on the town's website where your tax dollars are going, but it's also an N minus two algorithm that if you upload four years of financial information, it can forecast two years out for you. And the idea is to upload seven years of that and come up with a five-year financial plan.
That sounds excellent.
And we're close, we're pretty close to releasing FY18's information to be presented on the town's website. And then the next step is to come up with that financial forecast, which gives us, I mean, it's not, it's not exact and specific, as I'm sure you're aware, Mr. Neely, because things change in motion. But at least it gives us, you know, the picture of where we're gonna be in a year or two, and what to expect, and what, changes that need to be made now to accommodate for such financial responsibilities.
Just to add a point, and that is, I think the forecast not only should include the traditional revenues and expenses on the accounting basis, but it also should work closely with the treasurer on the cash forecast. Because the cash forecast is by fund. You have the water fund, the sewer fund, the enterprise fund. So those pieces are critical in terms of the cash forecast, based upon, for example, all the state assessments, as well as the state aid.
Any other comments, questions?
Salter might be sitting in the room.
So I'll just weigh in on a couple of points. I think the idea of a project-based consultant to look at certain things, such as forecasting, is a good one. I think the idea of trying, if possible, to fill the position with someone, perhaps part-time, that has some of that background, as Katie's talked about, I think that's a good one. We are not voting tonight on whether to have the treasurer on the ballot again, but I think that decision should be made sooner rather than later. Where my head is on this right now is, I think the Town Government Study Committee has done a great job presenting a great proposal. The lion's shears of the proposals have gone through and have changed town government. This past spring, the voters had a different idea. The voters had a different idea about the structure of the government. And I think it's incumbent upon us to make the government that the voters have given us as efficient and as effective as possible. And I'm concerned that if we have that issue out there for the next nine months about whether we're gonna have an appointed or elected treasurer, it's gonna lead to uncertainty and unpredictability, where we now need stability. It's gonna lead to division, where we now need unity. So my view is that, at least in the short term, the voters have spoken. We have a structured government that the voters want. It's a percentage of the voters, but it is the voters. And that's the structure of government that we should do the best to make efficient and effective. And so we're not deciding that issue yet, but I think we need to decide it soon because, because I think we need to move forward. And I think we need to move on on some of these things. And I don't like uncertainty. You know, in business, Rick, you don't want uncertainty. You don't want unpredictability, and you don't want division. And my concern is, is that if we continue down this road for the next nine months, we may have that. And given our financial situation, it's not a good idea. So that's where my head is right now on this. And, you know, I think we're gonna have to make a decision sooner rather than later for those reasons. That's my view. Board may have a different view, but that's where my head is right now.
Well, that's why I'd like to get some input from the other towns that went through this and did it two or three times, because they would have faced the same issue of uncertainty versus certainties. And was it, was it a year after, or did they do it over a period, say, five years? Or was it back-to-back annual elections? So I think if we can get some color around that, that would help us in terms of deciding whether to be on the next April ballot versus another annual ballot.
Ms. Collins?
I think, too, I would be interested from those other towns to, as Katie said, some color to understand what some of the dynamics were when it finally tipped over into a yes. Because if we can find a town where the dynamics are similar, that would be really useful.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you.
All right, moving back to item seven, I believe. Do we have any other guests for any of the items, or?
We have Governor Stotan here with us, but.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we'll have to move forward then. Okay, excuse me. Item seven, ratification of the proclamation for John Flynn Day, which was held in Milton on June 28?
Friday, June 28.
Friday, June 28. And we need to ratify this, but I think it would be nice publicly to actually read the proclamation for John Flynn Day. And if someone would like to take the honors to read the proclamation, then we can ratify it. Mr. Wells?
I would be glad to read this proclamation dated June 28, 2019. Whereas in 1989, the Milton Select Board appointed John P. Flynn, a partner with the law firm of Murphy, Hessie, Toomey &amp; Lehane, LLP, as Milton's Town Counsel. And whereas, after 46 years of practicing law, including 31, 30 years as Milton's Town Counsel, John P. Flynn is retiring from the practice of law. And whereas, for the past 30 years, residents of the town of Milton, town employees, and numerous volunteer boards and committees, particularly the Select Board, the Town Administrator, the Planning Board, the Moderator, the Warrant Committee, and town meeting, have relied upon John P. Flynn's immense knowledge, skillful eyes, strong work ethic, and advice on all matters pertaining to municipal government. And whereas, throughout three decades, John P. Flynn guided Milton's boards and committees through many significant projects, including the closure of the former Milton landfill, lease negotiations with the city of Quincy and Granite Lakes Golf Course, the school building project, the acquisition of the deck over I-93 East Milton Square, redevelopment of the former hood and Henry's properties, and numerous other public works, planning and public safety matters. Whereas, John P. Flynn and his colleagues at Murphy, Hessie, Toomey &amp; Lehane, LLP, have represented the town of Milton well in litigation and transactional matters. And whereas, John P. Flynn was born and raised in Milton, is an active member of St. Elizabeth's Parish, and with his wife, Donna, raised their family in Milton. And now, therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, thank John P. Flynn for his distinguished service to our town, the town of Milton, wish him well in his retirement, and hereby proclaim June 28, 2019, as John P. Flynn Day in the town of Milton. Signed by each of us.
You have a motion?
Seconded.
Whether we ratify your proclamation affirming June 28, 2019, as John P. Flynn Day in the town of Milton.
Seconded.
Motion's been made in second. And any further comments, discussion?
Well done, John.
We had a very nice reception for John, and in particular, thanks to Jen McCullough, who pulled it all together for us, and forced to Mike and everyone in the office.
And to you, because it was your idea.
Well, it was everybody.
No, but you had the idea. You pushed it.
I think all of us wanted to recognize John. He's given so much to the town over the years. So thank you, especially to Jen for all of her efforts.
Notice how she hides over there. She makes herself so small.
All right, motion's been made in second. And all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item eight, acceptance of Milton Academy pilot payment of $125,000 for FY 2019. So, does someone want to frame this, or do you want me to do it?
I'll do it.
Mr. Wells?
So I'll make a motion to accept the pilot payment for Milton Academy in the amount of $125,000 for fiscal year 2019.
Second. Motion's been made in second. And any comments, questions, or discussion? Mr. Farrington?
Just to qualify this a little bit, Milton Academy did file for tax abatement, which was granted within the last, I think, 30 days, just before the end of the fiscal year. And they filed for an abatement to the tune of roughly $124,000, just shy of $125,000. And they agreed to remit $125,000 to the town of Milton in the form of a cash payment, a cash payment applied towards a pilot payment, which we do appreciate legally. They're under no obligation to do that, as we well know. But it is still a matter of accounting. It's moving one, it's moving money from one column over to another. And while we do appreciate that, certainly, I just would like to qualify that, that there's no real net gain here. And we understand they're under no obligation to do that. They filed for that abatement. They were granted that abatement. And we appreciate that, you know, they're in the spirit of that revenue that we're, we've been receiving, that they're continuing to do that. Technically speaking, it is a pilot payment. But again, I'd just like to point out and make everyone aware that there's really no net gain here. And maybe there will be moving forward. Maybe this fiscal year will be the year that we will see a net gain.
Just a quick question to that. Is a pilot payment something that, from a tax perspective, they can write off?
Well, I'm not a tax expert, but they're a nonprofit, so they don't pay taxes.
They don't pay taxes. Okay.
Ms. Collins?
I'd like to thank Milton Academy. And my understanding is that their decision to seek the abatement and to then make the pilot payment, the little abatement, came from the discussions they had with the Pilot Committee. So I just wanted to get that some context of it. It's not as though they just out of the blue decided to file this abatement. This negotiation with Milton Academy to keep those properties on the tax rolls was negotiated a couple of decades ago by a former town administrator, and that had been their practice. So I think we should build the historical context of it.
And in addition, I think it's fair to point out, whoa, fair to point out that Milton Academy, along with this, made donations to the town directly to the fire department and the police department in the amount of $7,500 each. I believe it was $7,500, $7,500 each, so a total of $15,000. So perhaps in terms of cash to the town, we can say there's been a net gain of $15,000 from that. So certainly, we thank them for that. If you, if you include those amounts, then their payments are a little bit, a little bit more, a little bit better. So, anything else? Motion's been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item nine, Curry College.
So I'll make a motion to accept a pilot payment from Curry College in the amount of $110,000 for the fiscal year 20... of $110,000 for the fiscal year 2020.
Seconded. Motion's been made in seconded. Any comments, questions, discussion? Mr. Farrington.
It is an increase, a net increase of $10,000 as compared to last fiscal year. So we'd like to thank Curry for that. We'd like to thank President Quigley for leading the charge on that, and, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. We understand that, you know, it's a, a difficult, challenging financial situation for every educational institution. So it's noticed, it's appreciated, and thank you.
Mr. Wells.
I'd just like to follow up on that, in that, you know, this is, Mr. Quigley has, President Quigley has historically been making payments to us for some time now. I think he's increased, just in the past two years, from about $80,000, $85,000, now to $100,000.
Eighty-six.
To $110,000. To $110,000. I've said this publicly many times, that he's been a great partner to this community in so many ways. I think if you were talking from the police chief, especially to the superintendent of schools, and so many others, he is a great partner to us. I'm very upfront when I speak, he is also a friend to me and has been a great mentor to me. But I'm very appreciative that he did this. I didn't, I was, actually, Mr. Dennehy and I talked, we thought it would be the same, and these are the types of things he does. He does things when you least expect that, and I appreciate that very much. So thank you.
Anything further? Motion's been made in seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item ten.
I have to recuse myself on ten.
Noting that Mr. Wells is stepping out of the room in order to recuse himself from the next item, which is the acceptance of a Copeland Family Foundation, Inc. gift in the amount of $30,000 for a council on aging van operation.
I'm willing to accept a gift from the Copeland Family Foundation, Inc. in the amount of $30,000 for a council on aging van.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Just thank you very much to the Copeland Foundation.
Yes. No, go ahead.
Well, Mike Dennehy was just saying how important the vans are, and that we continue to find out how many people need transportation, so thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think our director of our council on aging has pointed out how critical the van operation is, and how critical this $30,000 is to, to, you know, keeping...